That's right. Thank you, Father. Thank you for everything that was done for us, Lord. To be here this meeting, Lord, as we do with the best of county law and people of county that are from the Lord's. As far as this fire, Lord, is that he does cure it, or cure it was has the Lord Jesus in him.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Roll call, Mr. Clark.
Joe Anderson. Brown Harold. Richard Kirkland.
Here.
T.J. Langford.
Here.
Chad Leeny.
Here.
Adam Reynolds.
Present.
Bill Shannon.
Here.
Paulette Summey.
Present.
Roger Thomas.
Here.
Chris Weisman.
Here.
Kate Preston.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Before we start down the agenda, I just want to take a moment to thank the commissioners for being flexible for the last month and a half in the way we meet. Most importantly, I want to take this opportunity to emphasize and thank our county employees. I tell you what, our county employees since the first of March have really, really worked hard, and they've come to work every day. They've been flexible, they've been adaptable, and we continue to run the county, the county business. Bills have got paid, payroll has been run, buildings have been cleaned, renovated, and all those type of things. And I just want to emphasize to the commission how hard that our employees have worked. They were thanking the sheriff department, too, our maintenance, especially our cleaning staff, has been impactful. I just want to thank those folks. Mr. Sloan and Ms. Tal, I know that you've been appreciative of our county employees, too.
I appreciate it that you.
Yeah, I.
And Brian, thanks, help us.
If I may speak for me, I'd like to thank Mayor Ingram for being so helpful. Anything we've suggested, we've got it. So he's got our back. The first day he come in on Monday that we decided we was going to have to lock the lobby down because of the governor's orders, we first were talking about just doing that and putting somebody outside and letting in just one at a time. And I got thinking of that after he left, and I called him up. I said, "How about getting somebody out here to the shovel? Just make me a side lock, and I'll have it in a walk-up wind." And the people really loved it. As a matter of fact, some of them wanted us to keep it. But we're going to be open on Friday on a limited basis, and I'm still going to keep my window until we can be full blast. But I appreciate the mayor for everything he's done. I appreciate Sheriff Jones, too, for his help, and the finance director, Ms. Hicks, and I won't call more names because I know I'll forget about you. But thank y'all.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you again, commission, for how you support this. It's certainly been uncharted water the last couple of months, and we've had to do things that, you know, I think Sheriff Jones said it wonderfully yesterday, our LEPC conference call, is, you know, there's no education or training for what we've had to go through in the last couple of months. But this county's stuck together, and I think we've seen that with the kindness, obviously, donations and things that come in just every single day, hand sanitizer, masks, gloves, and that's what makes all of us proud of Monroe County. But thank you all. I just wanted to take an opportunity to do that. 428-1, commission minutes from the March 24th meeting. You have those before you. I'll entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
Motion.
Have a motion from Commissioner Wiseman, is there a second?
Okay.
Have a second from Commissioner Thomas, is there any corrections for the minutes? All those who approve him say aye. Any opposed? Those minutes will be recorded. 428-2, we have one application for another republic. Will entertain a motion to consider that.
Motion.
Have a motion from Commissioner Lanning, second from Commissioner Langford, is there any discussion? All those in favor of accepting this application, say aye. Any opposed? 428-3, our trustee monthly report. You have that report from Ms. Hall in front of you. Do I have a motion to accept this report?
No motion.
Have a motion from Commissioner Thomas, is there a second?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Lanning, is there any question or discussion on the trustee report? All those accepting, please say aye. Any opposed? 428-4, is the Director of Finance monthly report. I'll entertain a motion to accept this report.
Okay.
Have a motion from Commissioner Wiseman, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Reynolds, is there any question from Ms. Hicks on this report? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That report will be accepted. Our quarterly reports from elected officials, as well as our directors and department heads, 428-5 through 428-25, I'll accept those unless there's any objection to accepting those as one motion. Do I have a motion to accept the quarterly reports?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Langford, that motion was from Commissioner Lanning. Any questions on any of these reports? All those in favor of accepting, say aye. Any opposed? Those reports will be accepted. 428-26, be resolved, Monroe County Commission Meeting in Regular Session, April 28, 2020, the following amendments for Monroe County Animal Shelter for a temporary salary increase for two employees to be made in the general fund budget near 1920 in the amount of $880. $919.28 combined with retirement. And again, this is temporary, only through June 30th, then it will go back to the original salary.
Motion.
Have a motion from Commissioner Summey, is there a second?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Lanning, is there any question or discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Clark.
Richard Kirkland.
Aye.
T.J. Langford.
Aye.
Chad Leeny.
Aye.
Adam Reynolds.
Aye.
Bill Shannon.
Aye.
Paulette Summey.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Chris Weisman.
Aye.
Motion carries. 428-26A, be resolved, Monroe County Commission Meeting in Regular Session, April 28, 2020, the following amendments to Monroe County Economic Development Department be made in the general fund budget for fiscal year 1920 for the donation by Yamaha Boat Manufacturer and USA Incorporated to offset the portion of the cost of the Monroe County Academic Achievers Bank with for $500. Do I have a motion to accept this donation?
Motion. No motion.
Have a motion and a second. Motion from Commissioner Langford, a second from Commissioner Thomas, is there any question or discussion? Roll call, please.
Richard Kirkland.
Aye.
T.J. Langford.
Aye.
Chad Leeny.
Aye.
Adam Reynolds.
Aye.
Bill Shannon.
Aye.
Paulette Summey.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Chris Weisman.
Aye.
Motion carries. 428-26B, be resolved, Monroe County Commissioner Meeting in Regular Session, April 28, 2020, the following amendment to Monroe County Sheriff Department be made for the reimbursement of missed salaries in the general fund budget for the fiscal year 2019, 2020, in the amount of $1,961.93.
Motion.
Have a motion from Commissioner Summey, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Thomas, is there any question or discussion? Roll call, please.
Richard Kirkland.
Aye.
T.J. Langford.
Aye.
Chad Leeny.
Aye.
Adam Reynolds.
Aye.
Bill Shannon.
Aye.
Paulette Summey.
Aye.
Roger Thomas. Chris Weisman.
Aye.
Motion carries. 428-26C, be resolved, Monroe County Commissioners Meeting in Regular Session, April 28, 2020, the following amendment to Monroe County Sheriff Department be made in the county general fund budget for the fiscal year 1920, in the amount of $20,440.20 for insurance for COVID. Have a motion from Mr. Langford, Commissioner Langford, is there a second? Second from Commissioner Lanning, is there any question or discussion? Roll call, please.
Richard Kirkland.
Aye.
T.J. Langford.
Aye.
Chad Leeny.
Aye.
Adam Reynolds.
Aye.
Bill Shannon.
Aye.
Paulette Summey.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Chris Weisman.
Aye.
Motion carries. 428-26C, be resolved, Monroe County Commission Meeting in Regular Session, April 28, 2020, the following amendment for the sale of vehicles donated to the Monroe County Sheriff Department by the federal government be made in the Monroe County Sheriff's Department budget for fiscal year 19 and 20 for the amount of $500. Have a motion from Commissioner Wiseman.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Thomas, is there any question or discussion? Roll call, please.
Richard Kirkland.
Aye.
T.J. Langford.
Aye.
Chad Leeny.
Aye.
Adam Reynolds.
Aye.
Bill Shannon.
Aye.
Paulette Summey.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Chris Weisman.
Aye.
Motion carries. 428-26E, 26E, be resolved, Monroe County Commission Meeting in Regular Session on April 28, 2020, the following amendment to the Monroe County Sheriff Department drug fund be made in the Monroe County General Fund Budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. The donation was made by Shield Republic LLC in the loving memory of K-9 Officer Eros in the amount of $260.86. Have a motion from Commissioner Lanning.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Langford, is there any question or discussion? Roll call, please.
Richard Kirkland.
Aye.
T.J. Langford.
Aye.
Chad Leeny.
Aye.
Adam Reynolds.
Aye.
Bill Shannon.
Aye.
Paulette Summey.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Chris Weisman.
Aye.
Motion carries. 428-26F, a resolution to grant approval for the Monroe County Sheriff Department to submit an application to the United States Department of Justice for reimbursement of correction officers over time due to COVID-19. Whereas Monroe County Sheriff Department through the Monroe County Government requests permission to submit an application to the United States Department of Justice for a grant reimbursement for correction officers over coronavirus. Whereas this grant will fund 100% of the cost of overtime salaries paid to corrections officers during the coronavirus. Whereas Monroe County Sheriff will follow proper procedures for this application, which will not require a match from the Monroe County Sheriff Department's budget for the fiscal year 2019, 2020. Whereas Monroe County meets all qualifications participating in this grant to meet the federal guidelines for control of coronavirus and safety of inmates housed at the Monroe County Justice Center, J.
Motion.
Have a motion from Commissioner Langford.
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Wiseman. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Richard Kirkland.
Aye.
T.J. Langford.
Aye.
Chad Leeny.
Aye.
Adam Reynolds.
Aye.
Bill Shannon.
Aye.
Paulette Summey.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Chris Weisman.
Aye.
Motion carries. 428-26G, a resolution for a grant approval for the Monroe County Sheriff Department to submit an application to the State of Tennessee Office of Criminal Justice Programs, Department of Finance and Administration for the payment for a subcontractor to support mental health patients. Whereas the Monroe County Sheriff Department through the Monroe County Government requests permission to submit an application to the State of Tennessee Office of Criminal Justice Programs, Department of Finance and Administration for the payment to a subcontractor to transport mental health patients to the required facility. And whereas the grant will fund 100% of the cost of the subcontractor. And whereas the Monroe County Sheriff will follow proper procedures for this application and will not require a match for the Monroe County Sheriff Department's budget fiscal year 1920. And whereas Monroe County meets all qualifications participating in this grant to enter into a subcontract with the approval contractor which provide transportation of mental health patients to a required facility who have been incarcerated by the Monroe County Sheriff Department.
Motion.
Have a motion from Commissioner Langford.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Thomas, is there any question or discussion?
Yeah, and then we're even talking about that we can charge their health insurance. The bill was passed last year throughout the state funding, from my understanding, will be available this July. What it does is, me and the mayor will have to agree on the group that we use as far as subcontractors. Bradley County, as of right now, is using a group called Amerimed. And currently, what they do is they build a health insurance, if they have health insurance. If they don't, then they write it out. What this does, though, what you guys are proving, is for us to apply for this grant and this funding from the state of Tennessee, so it will offset the cost of what they're writing out. And hopefully, we get them in Monroe County as our contractor to do the mental health transports. And guys, keep in mind, some of these transports we're doing on the July side, the majority of them are going all over Memphis. So that's two deputies, two in front on salaries, mileage on vehicles. It'd help us a lot if we could get this done, so.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions or discussion? Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Richard Kirkland.
Aye.
T.J. Langford.
Aye.
Chad Leeny.
Aye.
Adam Reynolds.
Aye.
Bill Shannon.
Aye.
Paulette Summey.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Chris Weisman.
Aye.
Motion carries. 428-26H, a resolution to grant approval for the Monroe County Sheriff Department to apply for a grant to furnish courtroom security equipment for the Chancery Courtroom. Whereas Monroe County Sheriff Department through the Monroe County Government requests permission to submit an application to the State of Tennessee Judiciary, AOC, and whereas in order to provide security needs to Monroe County Courtrooms. Whereas Monroe County courtroom captain, Jane Mason, under the direction of Monroe County Sheriff Tommy Jones, will follow proper procedures for this application and will require a 10% match of funds for Monroe County courtroom fees. Whereas Monroe County meets all qualifications participating in this grant to provide for substantial improvement in courtroom security and increase deputy safety at a fraction of the cost of the equipment obtained.
Motion.
Have a motion from Commissioner Kirkland, a second from Commissioner Langford, is there any question or discussion?
The 10% will be of the $11,020. Okay, so it's not a huge.
Yeah. Not compared to the. So what they're doing, let's keep first, having transporter inmates from the Justice Center back up to the courthouse, so the Chancery Courtroom basically whole court through the video side. So I can do the video around here, basically the same system. Different company, but same thing behind it. So that should relieve us of some liability, transportation, manpower, anything else. So we'll keep the energy flow up here.
Any other discussion? I want to thank Captain Mason for applying for this grant. Roll call, please.
Richard Kirkland.
Aye.
T.J. Langford.
Aye.
Chad Leeny.
Aye.
Adam Reynolds.
Aye.
Bill Shannon.
Aye.
Paulette Summey.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Chris Weisman.
Aye.
Motion carries. 428-26I, a resolution to grant approval from Monroe County Mayor to submit an application to the State of Tennessee Department of Finance and Administration for reimbursement of the governor's local government support program. And before I read the entire resolution, let me give you a little backstory. Each city or municipality in each county was given grant application funding based on our census information, our 2010 census information. And Monroe County share that is just shy of $860,000. There's about five categories that the governor encourages us to focus on, being roads, capital improvement, COVID-19, and utilities, which includes water projects. We all know we've got a lot of needs in our county, a lot of departments that need these things, and, you know, we can spend this money 50 times over probably and not be a drop in the bucket. I met with the finance department, and we're talking to various department heads and elected officials. This is simply my recommendation, how I feel that this money can touch the most people in Monroe County, is these particular areas. And certainly, we're on a very short time window to get this application in. We do have some time to spend it and to complete the projects. And we have chose road projects to give Mr. Teague. Obviously, he's always needing funding, and we've requested $400,000 for that. And you know as well as I do that I'm going to pay about four to six miles of road in Monroe County, but it will help Mr. Teague immensely. We also felt like one of the things that we needed to focus on was some of our waterline projects. Since we used the CDBG grant last year to apply for the ambulances, and the way that grant cycle rolls over, we would have to wait one more season or one more cycle to apply again for that. We had several, we've got a list of waterline projects in our office, and that Chestnut Valley group, which has came before the commission multiple times, was next on that list, be it through the CDBG grant or whatever. And we felt that they needed to be first on the list when money became available because we chose to do the ambulances. And we've got some other things on there. We felt that if Mr. Watt gets one more ambulance, that that will complete his fleet, and he will be in good shape for several years and not have to request that from county commission. Again, all this money is no match. It is one-time money, but there is no matching. We did ask for a set aside money for some COVID-19, and you'll see another grant coming up that will involve some capital improvements for our county through some maintenance equipment, roof repairs and things like that. But this is, this is every dollar of that $859,489, I believe what the total was. So is there any questions? And I'll read the resolution to make it legal, but is there any questions or discussion on this?
What is the 95 just for the COVID-19 response? What is exactly?
I'm glad you asked that, Mr. Langford, and Mr. Sloan can probably attest to it, and Mr. West back there. Obviously, we're getting ready to open back up to the public. We are trying to do our best to protect our employees as well as protect our public, and that involves putting up glass, plexiglass. Also, this money can go back in and help recoup some of the costs. Obviously, we have spent, Mr. West's budget has spent a lot of money on cleaning supplies, disinfectant, gloves, masks, things like that. Some, that's where some of that money, that's kind of it. And really, we're required, the governor really wants us to spend some money on COVID-19. So obviously, with what's going on, and Mr. West has got a plate full with all the department heads requesting different projects, we thought this would help offset some of that. It says, "Whereas Monroe County is in need of funding for projects that meet all requirements of public charter, number 651, Title 3-22, Items 10.33 through 34. Whereas Monroe County Government is requesting $14,000 for the project of spending on IT upgrades, and those are actually for servers, for finance, and a couple of other departments. And whereas Monroe County Government is requesting $150,000 in project for public safety, the ambulance. Whereas Monroe County Government is requesting $286,000 in spending for utility upgrade system as two water projects, including Chestnut Valley and Griffith Branch. Whereas Monroe County Government is requesting $9,489 for a project in spending of COVID-19 response, Monroe County Government is requesting $400,000 in spending in road projects. Whereas it is agreed that the county will comply with the terms of the agreement prescribed by the Department of Finance and Administration. Whereas Monroe County Government hereby authorizes Monroe County Mayor to submit the application to the State Department of Finance and Administration requesting approval to proceed with this project." Have a motion from Commissioner Wiseman.
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Langford. Is there any further discussion? We've got final decision on the waterline. That was, that was just the list. We actually had the surveys already for those two particular, even though this is not through the grant, there's a lot of things that we will have to do, like the environmental studies and that kind of thing. But our priority was, we've got about probably 15 roads.
More or less, that's already in line.
They were in line, and it's basically the cause and the need when people come to the commission. Obviously, Chestnut Valley was, and we, and the way these work, the City of Telco, we will partner with them on that project, and the City of Madisonville on the Griffith Branch project. Actually, City of Telco is adding funds to that as well, to make that project work. And when the next CDBG grant comes up, I'm 10, if the commission allows me to use that in the water, too, and that takes a little bit longer, there's a lot more paperwork involved, but we, you know, we hope since the ambulances will be taken care of, we'll get back in the water business on grants.
So this does get the ambulance department ready for rotation and keep their.
Yes, and you will not see an ambulance in requesting his budget, which, you know, actually, his budget would decrease by $150,000 of course.
That's a $150,000 old project in spending public safety.
Yes, and ambulance. Roll call, please.
Richard Kirkland.
Aye.
T.J. Langford.
Aye.
Chad Leeny.
Aye.
Adam Reynolds.
Aye.
Bill Shannon.
Aye.
Paulette Summey.
Aye.
Roger Thomas. Chris Weisman.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner, for allowing us to, I know our citizens would appreciate that. 428-27 is the Monroe County Board of Education Budget Amendments. You have those before you, submitted by Department of Education. Have a motion from Commissioner Wiseman, is there a second to this? Have a second from Commissioner Lanning. Is there any question or discussion? Roll call, please.
Richard Kirkland.
Aye.
T.J. Langford.
Aye.
Chad Leeny.
Aye.
Adam Reynolds.
Aye.
Bill Shannon.
Aye.
Paulette Summey.
Aye.
Roger Thomas. Chris Weisman.
Motion carries. 428-28, these are our updated committee assignments and appointments based on expired terms, based on commissioner replacements, based on, for example, library board appoints their own outside of the couple from our office. But this is just continuing to update almost every month, it seems like, and we're trying to get this as updated as possible, so. And we haven't laid this a couple of months, so. Have a motion to approve these committees.
Motion.
Have a motion from Commissioner Kirkland.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Thomas. Any question or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those committees will be accepted. I do have just one other item, a couple items of business for your information. You can see in your packets, letter dated to myself, April 14th, from the Commissioner, Department of Transportation, Clay Wright, that Mr. Tom McCosh was named airport manager of. that, uh, Mr. Tom McCosh was named Airport Manager of the Year. And I just wanted to inform the commission of that. Of course, uh, two years ago, we received the Airport of the Year, Mr. McCosh received Manager of the Year. And that's where we've got some ongoing projects that, uh, we're working on out there. So congratulations to Mr. McCosh, but I did want to note about the commission for that. Oh, yes. Well, I'm gone, I'm gone, very. Having that been said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Ray.
Yes, sir.
Before you adjourn, I could ask the commission to say one more word.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
I told y'all I have to get somebody, as long as most important ones have been the main support.
Yes.
Randy West and his crew, and they have done everything we have asked him to do.
Sure.
And, uh, they're getting on their plate glass, their plates of glass ready and I think we can put up some tent early in the open Friday. And he's fixed a shield back there for the drivers, like just anything, uh, that we've asked him to do, he's done. And I feel bad if I went here tonight and did it, but congratulations.
I gave him a big.
I, I think they're working on big things. And I, I do want to mention this, this is, for March of 24th to February 28th, we have saved 4,429. There's a lot of us that went.
Absolutely.
But thank you, Mr. Wes.
Absolutely. We do have an outstanding team with our maintenance, our custodians and everyone. I mean, uh, even our sanitation department, finance department, and I'm like Larry, I'll lose somebody off it. These folks have been able to work and they've worked, they just put their head down and, and, uh, makes me proud of it. Makes me proud to work with and everything. Got a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Motion to adjourn, thank you, commissioners.